Yeah, why would I kill that?
I can't.
It should be it. There you go.
Okay.
Then let's span it out. Is that on this one up?
Matilda is.
Eric.
Elliot.
Boy, they keep moving everything square.
Today was the E can Zoom. I just, I couldn't even figure out where anything was.
Last time, well, that's what happened last time. You opened it and I was like, what the hell was that?
Yeah.
Which is why I started just a little early on my recording and he was like, if you can find it. Okay.
Solution just won't make it.
Jan, did Karen tell her this for me? She, we will blank.
Cardboard boxes.
Very nice. Very exciting. Tell her on very exciting. These are the ones that were in the Barbie dream house, right?
Yes.
You have exclusive Barbie dream house ads.
Perfect. Yeah.
Oh.
The Barbie dream house ads.
Yes.
They're mine all over.
The public didn't have solar that.
They're Barbie. They're being off.
Sir, can I just support you?
Hey, Ray. Did you leave us some punch? Well, we're not there yet. So it's 69. I'm on. Please rise. The pledge will be just being led by Ray. Welcome to our August 26th Village Policy Spa or Trustees Meeting. Can I get a motion that the minutes of the August 12th, 2024 meeting be approved? Trustee Fundesa?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Push discussion.
Yeah, I have some comments about this, these minutes. I'd appreciate if there's a dissenting vote like I provided for the fire contracts. If the minutes reflect something in the discussion and the reason for that. So in this case, it would have been, you know, in the minutes right now, it says trustee basket asked for this motion to be referred to next meeting, but no explanation of why. And it would have been easy to add, due to lack of time provided to review the contracts, which came in like at five something PM and six something PM the night of the meeting. So there is commentary from trustee and then so about the vote, the second vote on the contracts. But consistently, there is no commentary or explanation specifically for an I vote or Sean votes. And so I wish there was more balance there. Similarly, the parade vote, we had a long conversation about the issue with the clause related to blocking the sidewalk and whether it was reasonable to say someone needed to be moved out beyond 10 feet or sidewalk width when ADA clearly states that five feet is needed for access for a doorway or a driveway. And so that was a big topic of conversation is completely missing in the minutes. And in fact, the minutes, this addition to the minutes or the amendment, you know, how an applicant can appeal to the board to waive, to waive some requirements of the permit. You know, that was really an idea that I put forward, but based on how the minutes are written, it looks like I'm against that, but I'm very much for that. But I just feel like there should be more balance with explanation of, especially when trustees have differing opinions. And I guess it's not required, but I still don't see balance. I see some opinions in there and other opinions not. So, so I just wanted to express my objection to how the minutes were done this time.
I don't know if this one about trades, the one about.
Due to insufficient review time?
Yeah, that's fine. The one for the.
Yes. Do you accept that as a, yeah, where do you accept that on your second?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll change that to due to insufficient review time. About, I think all that was being considered.
Yeah, the, the other one was the parade, you know, the issue with.
Does the motion maker, no, he doesn't.
I don't really see a way for you to put that in right now at this point, you know. The folks can refer to the video.
All in favor?
Hi.
As amended, all in favor, I'm sorry.
Hi.
And I, all opposed?
I'll vote yes, since we have the amendment.
So all in favor, this four to zero, is that where we are here?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, I know presentations, public comment. I should add that there will be an added motion here. Chief Bush had asked me to add this, to add Hannah Beadnell as a part-time police officer. I think that makes her the third female false spot police department police officer, actually. So that's exciting for us here. So that will be a motion added in the consent agenda. So that will be number three for the consent agenda at that point. So now we go to public comment on the agenda items. Only three minutes for speaker and agenda items on. Yes, Liz.
My comments to the items, one off to B.
Can I have your address, please?
Oh, Liz Corbin, St. Mary's High. On B, happy to see that you were actually using Lobella to evaluate, you know, your proposals as stop signs. I'm not quite sure why that location needs a stop sign, but at least you're having, you know, an outside expert look at that. I was wondering why that assessment wasn't done for Hyde Boulevard. I remember Elena Moran from PHB recommending that we do some traffic counts and some studies before she would recommend a stop sign on Hyde Boulevard. So I, I would like us to, to, you know, use the experts to determine that. Also, as I remember, Capitol Region Transportation Committee offers three traffic counts, which we could bring and look at these problem streets, not just Hyde, Hyde, but West and Boston and all these streets and get traffic counts and see if they warrant having stop signs or other pedestrian safety improvements.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, sorry. The second thing is on point A, the BOA. I'm disappointed to see that you were trying to negate, you know, committee policy that has worked quite well since we passed that law. It allows for balance. And in this case, you know, without that, these, you know, members will be selected by just the majority of the board, which has constantly, you know, voted together and one way. So I do remember Bernadette on May 13th saying that the committee would be handled with existing committee law. And she had responded to both Sean and Ben and said, yes, I was going to say yes, when then asked her if it was going to follow the committee policy. So I'm hopeful that Bernadette will hold against this measure based on her comments. Thank you.
Anybody else? Great. Reminder to everybody on Zoom that you do want to speak agenda items. This is the time where you should hand. And it's where you got and gets prepared to start these three minutes right now.
Right out in 16, I work out. Pertains to the same topic about the stop sign. I am very glad to see that as one who is challenged to get across some intersections and as one who drives through that intersection a lot with a lot of close calls because people will look at it and assume it's a three-way stop. I've had a number of people try and, you know, take a left from Saratoga Avenue along to Kent. As I'm coming through the other way, trying to get across at that crosswalk is extremely difficult sometimes because, you know, you're not sure if those cars are going to yield to a pedestrian. So I'm very glad to see that we're doing a study or at least looking at putting a stop sign where one is needed as a dangerous.
Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Anybody else? Yes, Mike.
Good evening. Mike Icarucci, three micro drive. I also want to speak to motion seven.
Did you vote?
Yes, we do.
Congratulations.
So the motion, as opposed in the final sentence, gives reasons for this change in procedure. And I guess I just want to repeat a little bit what Liz might come to. Each of the five of you, only four are present today, has been elected by voters in the village and presumably to represent the interests of all the residents and people who are affected by things that happen in the community. With that in mind, the idea that the standard rules allow for each of the five of you to be able to dominate an appointee to committee makes a lot of sense to me personally. So two specific questions, if I may. One, do the standard rules that the board adopted previously fail to meet the requirements for approval by the state? And secondly, how do the standard rules for determining the members of the committee fail to provide a diverse set of stakeholders? Which seems to be a primary reason for your issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no hands, seeing no hands on Zoom, we shall progress. Under the consent agenda again, is there any opposition adding on the inclusion of a motion to authorize the inclusion of Hannah Beadnell to the part-time police officer roles? Over with that? And does anybody want to remove anything or change anything on the consent agenda that existed prior to that? Here are no objections. Can I get a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Trustee Fundesa?
Second.
Trustee Baskin discussion.
What happens to the access inventory from the library?
They're going to be, if you want to speak to it, because I think you said a meeting actually about that, about the access inventory.
Yes.
Grab your microphone.
Some of it, such as the folding tables and the chairs, the PD is going to look at since they have their new meeting space and no furniture. That way, if anyone else in the village needs it, it'll be handy and easily accessible.
All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. I get them. I read that at the reading. Can I get a motion that pursuant to section 155G of the Village Code, the Board of Trustees, suspend the rules related to the committee procedures in the following manner for the Crownfield Opportunity Area Committee? One, in addition to the committee interest form, an interested stakeholder shall submit a completed version of the attached call for committee members form to be considered for selection. Two, the charter of the committee shall be the information provided on the first page of the call for committee members form with maximum number of members, maximum number of members set at nine members. Three, the committee selection rule set forth in section 155 of the Village Code shall not be operative for this committee, but the board will consider comments and thoughts from all members after they have reviewed the applications discussed above. And the selection of members shall be performed either individually or for the entire committee at once through a majority vote of the Board of Trustees. Four, vacancies shall similarly be handled through a majority vote of the Board of Trustees. And five, trustee Bernadette and Dana Seppare shall continue as liaison for the committee. Reasons for the suspension of procedure in section 155 is that, or are that the committee is a committee required by the State of New York and that must be approved by the state and the committee must contain a diverse set of stakeholders as required by the state. Trustee Fundesa?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Push discussion.
So I'm interested in Director Lucci's questions about why our current process couldn't accommodate the state. So is there a reason our current process cannot accommodate what's required? And first of all, I guess we should specify what are the state requirements? So on your form, you say that the committee includes representatives from local business community, nonprofits, community organizations, developers, village leadership, and engaged citizens. Is that directly from the BOA guidance or, or is that paraphrased or something?
Let's use, I'm sorry. Let's use some of the language. So I did try to do this more about was the application, the call for committee members. I did take some elements from our committee code. You know, because there's, there's good questions that I had made in the form that we use. So I tried to incorporate some of that. So it's really just trying to blend of those, the best rules, you know, in the heart of kind of, what do you call it? Full policies. What was this specific time you were thinking about? It's a lot of words.
I think it, I don't know if it's on the form itself, but it said, you know, includes. I mean, I guess my point is it's a pretty broad production of the community that is listed within the description of who's being sought for the committee. It's not a particularly restrictive subset of community members. But what I'm, what I'm interested in is the BOA language. I don't think I've seen the specific language, but I have to assume that what you put on the form basically is, has some fidelity to the state language. So so anyway, so that I guess is who you're looking for. Business, local business community, nonprofits, community organizations, developers, village leadership, and engaged citizens. I think that's the, that's who you're looking for. All right. So given that that's who you're looking for, how, why do you think that the current process where we contribute won't work?
Well, I think I would like for us as a board to consider kind of who are stronger stakeholders. There are folks that I really like us as a group to target by actively encouraging them to apply that live around the sites. So the folks that are near work kits, the folks that are around, you know, Angelica and other sites that are major sites that need attention. I think I want to make sure there's stronger stakeholders in that sense and they could be citizens, they could be developers. I think there's just, it's a slightly specialized project. So we want to make sure, and ultimately the state is the one who approves this. So want to make sure we're working with them to get the committee approved appropriately.
So in effect, you're going from inclusion of five board members to the inclusion of three board members. And so I'm just wondering how, how it is that, that we can't, again, five board members can have all their criteria in mind that, that we think is important just as well as three board members can, can have that. And we can all put forth names with the requirements and guidance in mind and, and hopefully kind of consensus where the committee represents the entire community. And, you know, in terms of political affiliation, for example, or.
That's interesting. And so three, and the actual motion that we're discussing, it says, you know, but the board will consider comments and thoughts from all members after we all review the applications. I don't want this to be done in a vacuum. It's just that we should have the ability to, you know, make adjustments as needed according to the statutes on us. So I mean, if you don't support it, that's fine, but I think the hardest to include you in it. So I.
I don't understand why we can't have that conversation under the current rules. I don't think it doesn't make any sense to me that we can't have that same conversation with the current rules, what everybody has to say. Ideally, what I would suggest is we all have the ability to choose up to two committee members and then the mayor can choose three, which would be 11 people. It would make sure we're all represented and the communities don't.
I think that's kind of a very large committee. We're all just caution that we're too large of a group. So we don't know that that's ideal.
There's a lot of people.
Okay.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Price Bush?
Yes.
Trustee Vandeta?
Yes.
Trustee Baskin?
No, this feels like government buy the view for.
Mayor Rossi?
Yes, three to one, the motion carries. Can I get a motion that the attached proposal from Lobella related to the Saratoga Avenue and Kent Street intersection valuation potential stop sign slash line design be approved, authorizing the mayor to execute the proposal?
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Baskin? Trustee Fundesa discussion.
So I sort of have the same question. I'm glad that you're doing a study. At some points, your supporters were doing studies. So I'm glad you're doing this. I do wonder why we didn't do this with the Hyde Boulevard stop sign before we put them in. But I'm glad that this is happening, at least for this. And I'm just wondering what the difference of rationale is.
We actually did, Ben. We spoke with engineers, but thank you.
You didn't do the study that we're.
You spoke of engineers in the same way as speaking with the Lobella engineer, that most of the fees of $1500 are going toward design.
It's a, they're assessing.
$1500.
So you just interrupted. They're assessing. I know. I'm not objecting to this motion. I'm saying there's an inconsistency.
No, it's not actually. You, you think there is, there is not.
There is. In my opinion, there is.
Thank you.
And, and so the question is, why is there that inconsistency? But the response you give me is, you don't see an inconsistency. So is that that?
All in favor?
I'm fine.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion authorizing the purchase of up to four additional year speed signs for amount not exceed $3,000 per sign? Expenditure shall be appropriated out of either one, the general funds contingency account line, two, the general funds fund balance, or three, any other general fund account line that the village's accountant recommends. Trustee Fundesa?
I'll second.
Trustee Baskin discussion.
So this, according to our resident traffic engineer, trustee Sean Raymond is the preferred engineer. What is it?
He's not a licensed engineer.
What is it? He's not a traffic engineer?
He's not a licensed engineer.
All right. Well, we'll ask him when he comes back what his position is. He is a traffic expert at DOT and the most expert person we have in this village for DOT and traffic related issues. Anyway, my point was, this is what Hyde Boulevard really needs, in his opinion, and I believe him. So I'm, I'm very happy that we are continuing with the best practice. The thing that I, I suggest is we take, there must be some extra funds from the, the, what was it called? Hope for Every Child? What was it called?
Hope for Children.
Hope for Children Everywhere. Because it seemed like a low cost issue, event with donated wood and there's probably several thousands left over from that event. And I think I wouldn't mind the treasurer confirming whether there is left, but I think there would be funds from that.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion proving emergency work outlined in the attached proposal related to transmission and transfer case work be performed on E142 of Union Fire Company Number Two by the Geno Chevrolet for an estimated total of $9,455.64. The emergency need is to ensure the availability of fire apparatus since it cannot currently be sent to any fire scene in its current status. This motion authorizes the mayor to execute any paperwork related to these repairs. Trustee Fundesa?
I'll second.
Trustee Price Push discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's announcements. Family Fun Day Dodge the Bull. Family Fun Day was the rousing success despite the forecast. And I just want to thank everybody associated with Family Fun Day for what they did enduring the setup that was nothing but rain. And that includes their volunteers, task force, DVW, countless folks that just did a phenomenal job. We estimate around, we're over actually 2,000 people came through during that day. And again, with that weather forecast, I wouldn't have been surprised if we had less than 1,000 at a certain point. And just the fact that people came out and drove, that they did, is a testament to how essential that event has become. Thank you, thank you, thank you to our task force for managing this situation. Already talking about ways to improve next years, I know. That's like trying to improve perfection in certain ways, but they're always busy trying to get a leg up and ahead each year and to get a bigger and better event when possible. So thank you again to everybody. We also were honored to be able to give out two keys to the village. One to the family of former mayor Brandon and one to the family of former mayor James El Capasso. As they both have recently been deceased within the last 15 months. And we wanted to pay honor to those that have left legacies and leadership that have helped make this village what it is today. And it was a very special moment for all of us that were there that night. Mary Bernadette, thank you for joining me on stage on that one. For, just to give the families their due that night. I was so thrilled to be able to do that for the refrigerators concert. And the refrigerators were, as we would expect them to be, a lot of fun. And thanks to everybody who came out for that, too. Still with the overhang of weather forecast, that wasn't favorable. We've got a nice crowd out there, too. Just from soup to nuts, that was just such a great event. So thank you to everybody again. I just got a text confirmation back. Bernadette and I actually went out on Thursday to talk with, I know it's written by his last name, Anthony Manella. I think it's the pronunciation, who lives on the corner of Hyde Boulevard and East High Street. He's had a concern about why there's not a crosswalk leading from that. There is a sidewalk on High Street on his side of the street, but across to the fields area that the school owns. And we discussed a little bit with our traffic engineer that had come out later that day to the Saratoga Ave Kent Street area, too, to kind of confirm some of our thoughts on it. So I reached out to Ed Martin over at the school district. He's asked if the school district would be in favor of us putting a pedestrian path on the other corner with possibly the future of a sidewalk maybe going in through there or something. But the anticipation, when you get over to that side of the street, is that you're going to field area anyway. To lean it on grass in and of itself wouldn't be a killer, I don't think, on that type of crosswalk scenario. But to get a crosswalk to form across Hyde Boulevard along basically East High Street there in a way that gives a protected crosswalk there as well. And he just texted me back and saying that the school district fully backs that idea. So we'll work on getting that done and get an additional protective crosswalk where people would cross for field access at the school fields area up there. Thanks to Tony Manella for his thoughts on that as well. Because sometimes when you think there's crosswalks, there aren't always crosswalks in those areas already. And so I think it's an improvement for sure over there. That's about it for tonight. I mean, we've been busier than heck, but nothing that I'm going to bore you with that tonight. Treasurers report bank accounts reconciled as of July 31st, 2024. There's a list of revenues and expenses in the treasurer's report that's attached. I will tell you that it was interesting hearing some of the discussion from Saratoga Springs about some of the happenings in dollars and cents with respect to Belmont Month, we'll call it, back in June. So August distribution, which I believe includes June, and based on these numbers, I think would definitely include June. It says county total tax and interest received 15,894,901. This now was approximately $1.5 million or just about 11% higher from the $14.3 million received in August of last year for that June of last year. Village total August distribution of 131,130. for that June of last year. Village total August distribution of one thirty-one one thirty is an increase from the amount received in August twenty twenty-three of one twenty-four one sixty-five, so basically just short of seven thousand dollar increase or this under six percent increase for the village in sales tax uh receipts for the month of June. So for us, June was great. We'll see if it counterbalances at all with the main track months that we're all used to here, the July, August, and two September uh situation, see if there was any offset ultimately. Uh that's been the big question mark is whether or not uh Belmont at Saratoga would have a resulting offset because of people coming up here already for the June scenario. But uh based on the travelers crowd on Saturday of forty-seven thousand and change, I think it was, and a record handle for a single day at Saratoga. Uh things were pretty strong, at least this past weekend. Thanks to the weather for that finally cooperating on a weekend. That's all I've got. I I talked for two and a half hours today, so I really don't have much I want to say at all today. Uh the use on report, let's start with Mary. I'll make it close to that, just to make sure that you're there, you got.
Uh the library board of trustees had their meeting a few weeks ago and due to the um preparation and construction for phase one, they're going to hold off on book donations temporarily, but monetary donations are always accepted. They wanted everyone to, don't be shy on that.
Where do those school supplies come from that I saw? Uh was that the library from some stranger or a couple or something like that I saw? Yeah, I saw a bunch of school supplies get donated. I thought to the library.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe Christine knows.
Not sure.
Yeah.
Fine. Sorry, I'm not aware of our library donations. I don't know.
I'll look back on that social media. I saw somebody I get received a bunch and it was impressive, same here.
Um BACC has agreed to host Storytime starting September fifth throughout the construction for phase one of the library. And they say it may go until April of twenty twenty-five. Uh they are finding spots upstairs where the different groups, the fiber arts and book clubs can take place as well as friends of the library can still maintain their meeting here. And they would like to, in the near future, come to one of our meetings and have a presentation and explain the construction, so the public knows what's going on with that. And the cleanup for down here has to be completed by September first. So and I think that they they felt that um the access items belong to the village, so they should stay in the village unless there was anything that the village had no use for. Then they would decide what would happen with that.
Yeah, August twenty-third. Thank you to the couple who honestly donated school supplies. Your bufffulness is much appreciated. Stop by to pick up some of these school supplies today. So thank you to whoever did that. Appreciate that. Trustee Bernadette?
Um just uh running off some of the stuff that the BSCPA is doing. Um just a reminder, they have a concert this Thursday at six P M. It's the pro title. Um the farmer's market continues to operate on Thursdays four seven and then six. Oh, I wrote that down very wrong. Uh I know, but and on Saturday, nine to one P M. Uh and it's been great. So you guys can chat and say hi, eat some good food. Um Not Working Breakfast is going to be uh Sherri Hoffman. While she's out of the village, she is a true supporter of the community, so I will give it a little plug. Uh September tenth, um eight to nine P M. Um and then the car show is set for October thirteenth, if you haven't put it on your calendar. Uh registration is open as well as sponsorships and vendor applications. Um and that can be uh you can reach out by visiting the website, Austin dot org. And they were also happy to host the arts committee uh for their tie dye projects. They have been taking, at the farmers market, they've been taking the white uh Boston Spa shirts that the BSCPA sells and then having uh assisting folks to tie dye their uh their white shirt. So it's fun. Um and they they've been doing it at the market. This is the second time they did that. So kind of short end man, that's all I got. Thanks.
And Ben?
Uh the park and tree board continues to work on um park rules in terms of signage and how to present the park rules. And and um they didn't have a lot more to report than that. Their next meeting, September seventeen to seven P M. At Cornell Plopper Extension. Committee on the Arts is is going great. They have so many things they've done and are planning to continue. Um upcoming includes um uh something called Make and Take Saturdays, twelve to three P M. On October twenty-sixth is the collage, November second, print banking, cars, November ninth, alcohol, ink tiles. All these parts are free to the public with all supplies provided, but pre-registration is required. Space is limited. So you can go to um the Boston Spa Committee on the Arts Facebook page or website to uh get more information on that. And their next meeting is September fourth. It's gonna, because of the library renovation, it's gonna be at the Real McCoy and um at seven P M.
We're working on trying to figure out where everybody can meet and hold their events uh because of this space not being available, reaching out to Brookside for some of the arts events and uh Van der Veris uh was receptive to the idea, so we're gonna make sure we continue to see and pursue that as well. So thank you to Brookside for anything they can do to assist as well uh in that respect. Old business, we as well park up. They just briefly um met with Caitlin Tarlana, our uh park and tree board chairwoman, and uh Jeff Daries and Jeff Anthony, who is of Studio A, our landscape architect, uh last Thursday morning it was. This was a busy day.
Yeah.
Uh and we pursued some of the things we discussed in last meeting with Jeff to get a uh more or less a blowout of the specs uh to essentially allow us to start building out certain pieces of it to know where we need to add conduit uh for the purposes of getting better electrical to route the park uh so that we're not kind of locked in. Uh we we don't want to keep digging up the park. We want to do it once and right, especially in the fall, with respect to any infrastructure, that being the sewer and redirecting the water uh spring water line there into a fountain area in the corner and then electricity as well. And so we want to make sure that we're kind of ready to go so that we can do the surface stuff in the spring. And phase one of that will essentially be the pathway, some plantings of the trees along the wall area back on Walnut. And uh what else do we have? Uh we're gonna try to pursue a fountain and a gazebo or structure, whatever you want to call it. And perhaps some smaller things like some benches and other small plantings, uh phase one. Get that done by Belmont twenty twenty-five uh in Farmers Market right around the same time. And then restart with anything else that we uh deemed necessary to do in fall twenty twenty-five into spring twenty twenty-six at that point. So that we can, we the the general approach is save on a main contractor when you don't necessarily need one, because we can piece out each of these different phases and pieces of work. So save on that and be able to really, you know, go at it in bite-sized chunks so that we're not completely uprooting or closing off the park for periods of time when it would be most used. And it seems like everybody's in a good uh uh position here and work together to make that happen, including DPW, which is important here. So we're excited about the direction we're heading in. Uh we should have a uh new proposal from Studio A to do the additional work we'll need from them uh in the next meeting in two weeks, so we'll uh look forward to that from Jeff, who's gonna try to hustle it out uh on Friday to us, but we kind of said it's not an emergency. We know what we have to do in the meantime with respect to sewer pipe and stuff like that. So he's working on making sure he's got all the angles covered for the blowout uh proposal that he needs to do. So uh thanks Caitlin, thanks Jeff Daries, thanks Jeff Anthony as well uh for their time on Thursday and excited again about what we're moving forward there. Don't forget that uh proceeds from the Wood Tower sale will be going toward that. And we're just waiting for the governor to sign that and we'll be hopefully reaching out to her capital region contact. They introduced themselves recently to us via email to see where we stand with that, maybe get that pushed over faster so we can close. And then we have the money just sitting there waiting for spending on part stuff like with Walt Park, so working on that as well.
There there are a lot of grant sources we should probably pursue.
And Jeff is gonna assist us in that process as well, so that suits value definitely. So Caitlin and Jeff, we're talking about grants on Thursday. So I'm gonna trust in them to spotlight uh where we should be uh aiming on that and work with them to get us there. One other thing I should have mentioned, Mayor's announcements. Thanks to the DPW staff and uh to Evolution for their work on Boston Avenue. Uh and then also just some minor stuff we got done today, Walnut Street, that former gravel area um that was next to um if I might, I'm blanking on the bread uh company there.
Nightworks.
Nightworks, thank you. So Walnut Street next to the Nightworks and that parking lot there. And also Washington uh Street Extension as well. Uh they did a great job getting Boston Avenue done faster than I could have ever imagined. That's a long stretch of pavement that they had to lay there. Uh and they did a great job with that today. And so thank you to everybody. Thanks to everybody with their patience as well. But uh DPW had spent a lot of time Thursday, Friday prepping that street to make sure we could do it today, and they did a great job on that.
Yeah, and they did a great job notifying residents, too. That was very helpful.
So we we got a couple complaints, but we we tried to do what we could on Monday and then they got a physical notice to us. Sometimes we just we have to go by when Evolution responds to us to make sure in a situation like that that we can get it done before school starts, because imagine the mess we would have there if we had buses having to reroute all the way around McMaster, et cetera, or uh to get uh Thomas rather uh up to up to that far. That's that would have just been ugly at a certain point. So it was good foresight by DPW to get that done when they did. Thanks again to them and Evolution for that. No new business listed here. Public comment on any issue, three minutes. And again, if you're on Zoom, you want to uh share your public comment, now's the time to raise your hand. Anybody in the room, though? Liz?
Uh Liz Formos eighty-nine, hi. Um I'm glad you talked to Tony. Yes, people may not know it. He has two small toddlers. And and, you know, they want to get over to the field. Um I would suggest one other thing for that corner.
Streetlight.
Streetlight.
I read your.
No, because I mean, actually, you know, if it's dark, you're coming down east side and take a left down the high, it you almost don't see anything. And uh unless this big soccer game, they've got their lights, but a street light at that corner, I think, would uh would uh enhance the pedestrian safety and automobile safety. Um one other comment, um last week, the last meeting, there was all the discussion is is been said about the parade. And um he had asked uh the attorney, you know, what was the source of some of the the information that she, you know, sort of looked at for other um, you know, other towns and villages. And I'm curious where you pulled that from, if you could get that information. So I just, I, you know, when I was a trustee, I did a lot of, you know, research, things of the same, and I think it's important to, you know, know what kind of communities, you know. Uh you know, were they sidewalk communities like ours or or, you know, were they more rural communities? Thank you.
And well, now I've got a contest. It was Christine and Ellie. It was literally simultaneous. Christine is the uh. Watch yourself on that one for you, Christine. Thank you.
Christine, it's Patrick, thirty-one Hyde Boulevard. I'm also president of Friends of the Library. Thirty-one, I'm sorry. I'm used to keep you in Hyde Boulevard. Turn the chat. Um I just wanted to expand, if I may, on what uh trustee uh Price Bush has said about the the preparation that has gone on for the um the library renovation. And I just want you, wanted to say that what you have declared as excess, and there will be more that is declared as excess, goes not just necessarily to other public um entities in the village, but there is to the Southern Adirondack Library System called Sales, which the library is a member of. Um uh there is a system where we offer things to other libraries and other libraries offer things to us. So that's part of what happens. The chairs that you're all sitting in, these gold chairs.
Just gonna say that, yeah.
From another library, as did um the new green and such a patterned chairs that are gonna be used in with the new renovation. The pink chairs are going someplace else and the gray chairs went someplace to some, I think, a church in this um area. So it's um which I I found most crippling. I'm really glad they're not here anymore. Um but in any event, so it's 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 a whole sharing system. And um it works very well and but there will be other things. I'm I'm gonna make it one of my reasons for living, to get rid of this rock. Anyway, um I also want to say that there that there has been a lot of work, you know, that Friends of the Library and the library board have been working on this renovation, the Friends of the Library and the library staff. Uh the Friends is a not-for-profit um entity, and we have been working on the clean out, clean up and cleaning out. And as you know, some stuff is donated, a lot of it is archived, a lot of what we see back here is the local history things that are gonna be saved, that's gonna be put in a new local history room. But I just wanted to give a um some credit to the people who have been working, because it's probably a hundred hours of volunteer time over the last month of getting the library ready. Um and that is Andy Mannion, Lori Acey, Jim Carter, Meredith Tower, Jim Fenton, Mandy Ryder, Danielle Thompson, Kathy Gibson, uh Pat Burnham, library staff and myself. So it's been really, it's been a great effort and um uh it's all gonna pay off hopefully for the for the new library. And thank you for your patience. I wanted to ask if we know where the new um where the next uh board meeting, village board meeting is gonna be held.
Uh.
You don't have to just, do we know?
We are considering right now for the next one to be in uh Village Hall. Uh we're gonna assess if the agenda doesn't cooperate. We're kind of doing that with all our meetings, uh including the zoning board to see agendas and see if there's controversial items that would flag, hey, there's nowhere we're gonna fit in there type of situations. And then we're also gonna have on reserve uh fire and police uh buildings as well. So we're working on this and you know, it's gonna be a little trial and error for a little bit, too.
But this is the last night that it's gonna be in this one?
I don't know that to be a hundred percent true, so I gotta talk to see uh what in two weeks is gonna be the condition. I nobody's uh suggested to me that it would be off limits, but I wanted, before I opened up my mouth to say that out loud, I wanted uh test that with actually the folks I know best on that one for me.
Okay, all right, because our push has been to get everything ready so that it all can be pushed into the center of the room, all of the library stuff, so they can move there. And we're on a schedule to have it done by Labor Day, so. And also, if the, when the meeting is gonna be moved, I'm sure you know that the whole key to that is uh communication.
Yep.
The last thing I wanted to say is.
I I've got to cut you at three minutes, so.
Okay, if, just if I may, the the sidewalk on the East High Street Hyde Boulevard that one of the things that would be very, very helpful, and you mentioned it, is the sidewalk on the, not the there is sidewalk on East High Street, but on the side of the Village Green Apartments on on East High Street. Uh between the Village Green Apartments and the school fields is positively treacherous for pedestrians. I cannot tell you how many, there's no sidewalk. There's vegetation. You have, it's practically you're in a jungle movie trying to climb through it. I cannot tell you how many times I have walked that myself as a pedestrian and thought I was gonna meet meet my maker. So if you can get a sidewalk in that area, that would also be very, very helpful. Thank you very much.
Uh Ellie, yeah, you were next.
Um first of all, my hat is the National Bottle Museum, seventy-six Milton Avenue, Boston Spa, New York.
Yeah, live.
Sometimes I feel that way. Um instead of going down a list of thanking everybody who was involved with the Family Fun Day, there is one warrior who deserves immense credit. She worked from dawn to dusk through incredible uh weather emergencies, people emergencies, and that's Gina Marazzi, and I'd like to thank her. Now, I'm putting on my hat, the resident, Ellie Dillon, one one six Malta Avenue, Boston Spa, New York. And um I just want to voice the fact that this new committee formation really is just the opposite of diverse. And I just want to voice the fact that this new committee formation really is just the opposite of diversity. You know it and I know it. And you're throwing guidelines away that are in place so you can manipulate the committee. And I'm so disappointed. That's all.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mike?
Thank you, Mike. I could do three on the program. First, I'd like to ask in two minutes to reflect the fact that I asked two specific questions about motion 7A and did not hear a response to it. The reminding, first question was, do the current standard rules fail to meet requirements for approval by the state? And the second question, how did the standard rules fail to provide a diverse set of statements? Second thing I just want to quickly touch on, I did not attend the August 12 meeting, but I watched the video of the, of the meeting. There was prolonged discussion about the contract for fire protection between the village and the town of Milton. As a quick refresher for everyone who might not be aware of this, the town of Milton and the village have had agreements in place for about 60 years, a series of agreements, the most recent of which expired at the end of 2023. As I understand, beginning in the fall of 2023, negotiations started between the village and the town. No resolution was reached and the town operates on a calendar year basis for its budget. So just some quick numbers for people who might be interested. In calendar year 2022, the town authorized, I'm rounding up my thousands, $473,000 to the village. In 2023, calendar year 2023, that authorization was increased by 13% to $538,000. For 2024, the town, absent a contract in place with the village, authorized a distribution to the village for fire protection, rallying off of $560,000, which is a 4% increase from 2023. My understanding is that the town already has made a partial payment of that total amount. And at the August 12 meeting, I think you, Mr. Mayor and village attorney, indicated that the village is unable to deposit that check because there is no contract in place between the two parties. I serve on the town of Milton's budget committee and I can say with a high degree of confidence that if the village and the town can agree to a one-year provision at the authorized amount of $560,000, a 4% increase compared to 2023, the town board would approve that. So I encourage you to seek resolution of this to benefit both the village itself and the residents. Thank you.
My gist of clarify, the 4% increase is based on assessment growth, not rate growth. Excuse me.
Well, so do I read your time? No, your two minutes are.
So, so no other entity uses a tax rate increase as the basis for determining. So our village attorney handles fire contracts for several other entities and is just as expert as anybody on this. We've been going back and forth on this topic. And in fact, a rate is what is the provision, a rate is actually what's produced. If you go to Milton BAS website, the Malta BAS website, the Boston BAS websites to see the tax collections. We have gone through this and we are pretty well versed on what's going on. And since the rate is stuck at 96 cents. And that's fine. At this point, we can't undo what's done. And the question is, where do we go in the future? We're trying to finish up that contract right now in Milton. I think we had an email. We're just waiting to see if anybody objected to wording with respect to it. And that's fine. The question is, where does it go next? And as I presented in the last meeting, we have concerns that Harmony Quarters is at $1.19,000 and Rock City is $1.32 per thousand and the village is at 96 cents per thousand. And while village rates tend to struggle because of the differential estate has created between fire districts and fire protection districts, we feel that the idea is to try to at least get toward a $1.32, not, I obviously think that they're over 90 or anything like that. By the time we get there, Rock City will be at about 50, about 60 probably anyway. So the idea is to make sure that the village of Boston Spas Fire Protection District and the fire department is being treated equitably in a contract. That's it. Go absolutely.
Just to make sure there's no misunderstanding, the one-year contract that hasn't been signed yet, the issue is not with respect to the sum. The sum has been determined for months. The issue is with respect to different language and a different contractual language that the town's requiring us to have in. It's not the sum. I just want to make sure that, that the sum is what is, we figured that out a while ago. It's the rest of the language.
Did you say a email had been sent with a change? I don't remember seeing that. Last week, Frank?
It was.
There we go to everybody.
I, I do not know if it went to everyone. I normally send to the mayor and then Bernadette as the fire liaison, the initial drafts and then get response from them and then send it to the town to see what the town's going to do. Once the town's good with it, then it comes back to the board to see if the board is good with everything.
All right. Could someone please forward it if that's your forward? Thank you. Town of Boston had canceled their meeting. That was their first monthly meeting. They will be covering this in their, what would have been second monthly meeting at the end of this month. So they'll be giving us any approval. And I think I outlined the thoughts on the controller in the town of Boston about things as well, about equitability moving forward. And yeah, it's about equitability. We abide by our mutually agreement as well as, if not better than, some out there. And so everybody in the town of Milton receives what I would call equal fire protection based on the fact that everybody covers that when the sirens go off and the trucks are called, we show up. And so do everybody else. And while I understand that we may not end up at the same dollar amount, there is a huge differential between $1.32 and 96 cents. And that was realized when we were at 36 cents going back in Boston was at a dollar at that point in time. And so, long story short, as somebody, I think it was a fire chief said, they've gotten us down the field. Now it's a question of scoring at the goal line and getting us over that goal line finally of equitable treatment in fire protection. And seeing that we carry the largest priced apparatus for the locality, which is a ladder truck, we really believe the equitability is necessary in that situation. Not trying to come that hard on Milton at all. It's a discussion that's being had. John Farolish and I, I believe, are going to be having a meeting this week. In fact, you just reached out today to have a discussion. And by all means, this will be our second sit-down. And like I said, I spoke with supervisor Ostrander a couple of weeks ago, or two and a half weeks ago or so, about just the idea of where are we going to go with this for the next budget year? We're going to do it year by year. That's fine. Prefer to have it written down for four years, five years, which is maximum. Actually, it's five years you can do by state law. But, you know, it is what it is. The whole notion here is to get an equitable treatment. You heard Liz complaining at the last meeting, if you did watch that meeting, that she thought it was way too low, the whole situation. Well, you know, it's almost like Goldilocks and the Three Bears situation. You know, one bed's too hard, one bed's too soft and one's going to be just right. It's probably going to be where it comes into ultimately. So that's what we got for you, Mike, on that one. It's been discussed for literally a year. Who else? Nancy, Gloria?
We can, if you want to, have a couple of things. Maybe it's a little bit, as I walk around town, almost every bus stop, anytime I walk by, there's trash there, but there's no trash receptacle. Is there a possibility we get trash cans at each bus stop? And I don't know who collects the trash around town. I don't know if it's the village or what, but.
Let me just say a quick, we've had a request for one at the Aldi bus stop recently. And the chances for this year are low only because we're about to remove them anyway as we get toward November season. But I did ask Jeff to evaluate where we have them, we need them. And Jennifer will be working with him on that as well.
Also by the bridge.
Yep.
I mean, when I walk in.
If you want to send me an email of some places that you would nominate for them, please do. That helps us.
And the other thing, because I live on North Street, I cut down Union Street to go to Aldi's and it's very difficult to get on Route 50 because of the weeds growing on that corner at Field Wicket's longer that. And I'm wondering if that couldn't be weed whacked or something, or can my husband go down and do it? I don't know.
Is it on their property itself or is it off of it?
It's right on the corner. I think it's part of the property. I don't know.
I've got to reach out to DEC about other matters related to that property. So that's why I'm asking you to see if I can include that as, hey, we can't really do anything about it, but you can type of thing. So I'll take a look at that if that's.
It just maybe there's some way to make that look a little bit more appealing, especially people coming from Saratoga, from the track to Boston Spa. They like Boston Spa restaurants and stuff, but that is the first thing they've seen. It's just not very pretty. And I also brainstorming, remember the nice sign that was put on the graffiti over the car wash before it was torn down? I forgot the number, 5,000 plus points of light. It was a great sign and it really had a lot of ugliness. Is there a way to put that over the fence or something, just to make that area look a little nicer?
I'm just hoping that they, that they finished the remediation they needed to do and it worked this time completely and that we can move to the next phase, which will be a property disposition, because obviously that's still, that's lingering out there, the county has. But they won't do anything about it, obviously, until they get the clean bill of health from the state. So hopefully we can start moving that property into the direction it needs to go into, because that could be the eyesore risk that it is right now. So that's some of the stuff I hope to learn from DEC about where are we now? We can, a few months, you know, to do what they got to do, get updates and rinse and repeat basically, since I've taken office. And hopefully we can get that moving and, like I said, don't have to worry about the rest of it because somebody will develop it into something that hopefully really good.
Just make some tender work in here.
Absolutely. Thanks, Eve. Send me that email too with the garbage can or receptacle locations. Love to see it. Anybody else? Yes. Yes, I see your hand back there, Russ. We also have somebody on Zoom as well. I just wanted to see if I can. Is it Jared? Thank you. Okay. So if you want to get Jared, go ahead. Thank you, Bray. Jared, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I joined late and assume that the motion 7A passed. I just wanted to voice my concern about the abandonment and suspension of the committee policy that provided for the full representation of our village based on our elected body. I fail to see how the suspension of that policy in particular will afford a more diverse committee. As we've seen with a number of other committees that are currently ongoing and operating, including our zoning advisory committee, the provision that allows each trustee to select members based on the applicant pool has been very successful. So I'm just struggling to understand why in the first place it would be removed and then how it could possibly be justified as a opportunity for a more diverse committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, anybody else? Yes, Ray Allen, sorry.
Ray Allen, 16 Millbrook Avenue. First, thank you, Eve, for leading into what I was going to talk about. Martha and the Village, coming into this village, it's ugly up there. And did any of you guys notice that the triangle sort of looked good all summer?
Thanks, Rotary.
You know, well, not only Rotary, but the BSBPA. And to some individuals that were doing work there, keeping it weeded and keeping it watered and all that. What I'm here to ask is, wouldn't it be nice to have that next year too? Have that area look good. Oh, wait, they're all perennials. All right. So we didn't waste money on the angles. And I can be persuasive with businesses sometimes and I got us all that at cost. So what I'm looking for is maybe one of the organizations within the village has a couple hundred dollars that I could get assigned to buy bulbs for their.
I replaced, I replaced your personal money in that.
I know, I know you did. I know you did. But I'm trying to get it from the village so we don't have to tap into the mayor's pocket. We need, we need to get bulbs in there in the next month or so, so that we'll have them for next spring. And we want to get good, big, thriving bulbs of all different, all different imaginations. Oh, 16 Millbrook Avenue, by the way. Sorry, Jared.
Is that the village?
That's in the village. I forgot. And the next thing is, you know, we talk a lot about politics being involved in so much that we do here. And I hear it all the time. My political pronouns are we, them and they. Okay? I am not affiliated with any party nor any candidate nor any particular way of thinking. I grew up in the 60s and 70s. I have very diverse thinking. But what I see is that we, we seem to make everything about politics. And then the first thing today was, oh, let's get the money out of the Hope for Children Fund. As opposed to anything else, we, we got free lumber. Last year we got free lumber. This year we got to buy lumber and we're going to be doing the project again because we're not giving up Hope for Children. It's something that's going to continue on and on and on until there's no more kids abducted, until there's no more kids that are at risk of being sexually assaulted or anything else. 32. That, I'll tap into some with Christine's time. That's important to us. So I am going to need the money for purchasing lumber for next year, this year. So the money we didn't spend isn't done yet. We still have projects from that festival at one day event that are going to be ongoing throughout the village and in the schools. So we're not done with that project. That money is not just hanging there. Oh, well, now we got all this extra money. We don't. We have to have it for ongoing projects. And let's look at maybe some extra from Litchwell Park. Maybe there's some extra from the library fund. Maybe there's some extra from other things that are going on. Don't always tap into the events committee and that's what you tend to do because you say, oh, it's political. Nothing more political than that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Gregory Thomas, 108 Saratoga Ave. I'm glad to see some attention being put into Saratoga Ave traffic. Although I don't think the Kent Street will help as much further down the street where we have some speeding problems. But I think that Hyde Boulevard ties into our street. If you don't know already, a lot of people cut across Hyde Boulevard, Malta Ave, Ralph, Saratoga Ave. So that same speeding traffic where it's wider, not that it's really better that they're speeding over there, but we have probably half the size of the street on Saratoga Ave is tied and cars parked. So it's almost a one-way. So glad to see some start with possibly the speed signs and and looking forward to maybe some other suggestions, things going forward.
Thank you. And as I've always said, and you know, you saw some of the back and forth, I think, on Facebook. With respect to the parking on both sides, I've seen we've, it's almost on the middle about those that don't want it, those that do want it, how to handle it in the winter and everything else. That's one of those. And we've got something about mechanic's street and being bureaucratic as well. And my general idea here is, hey, please give us the feedback of your community. If you think that there's a direction, one way or the other, that people are leaning, they're going to be the ones that have to sacrifice parking on the street or, you know, not having the ability to park on their own driveway for whatever reason. And those are the things that we are trying to be sensitive to in the process of evaluating these things. I'm also going to see, and Jennifer, I meant to tell you this earlier, so I'll see it all out now. Everybody to hear. In the case of the ones for Saratoga Avenue, because we have an unknown quantity going on there a little bit about what exactly the speed looks like, the, your speed signs, we may want to look at the data collection versions of those. And if we need to be up with extra, from your discretionary info signs, if it does cost a little bit more extra, so we'll look into that. So then we get a good data set on what exactly is going on there. I don't disbelieve you. I just, it's going to be good to have the data to hand over to save money later on to a traffic engine. to a traffic engineer to be able to say, here's what we got from the street and bulk directions ultimately, if we do want to go and do something else at a certain point. So that's what I'm taking about for those specifically.
I'd be curious about the speed signs, because thirty on Hyde Boulevard, I feel a lot different than thirty on Saratoga Ave. It's like doing thirty on a bike trail, almost. So I'd be curious to see, sometimes I'm, wow, they're going fast. If I, it's my neighborhood, so I do twenty. I feel like thirty feels fast, because all those cars are there. I know most of the kids have grown up, they're not, you know, young adults now, there's not as many young kids, but there's more, more families moving in. Sometimes, you know, you're just within a cross in between the cars, like, you know, I see cars come to skip and stop.
And we get a lot of requests about lowering speed limits, too. I just want to be clear that while the state has loosened things up on that aspect, it's not very loose. And we did inquire, we did a presentation, slide set from our engineer, Labella, that will explain to us what the steps are needed to be taken for that situation. Obviously, we're not going to affect Milton Avenue, that's a state route, but there may be other streets that we could concentrate going to twenty-five on, like some other municipalities have. But again, you have to meet certain standards and do certain things to make that happen. We don't want to spend tens of thousands of dollars on studies if it's avoidable to, which is one of the things that we were facing with some of the Hyde Boulevard stuff back when. So we took more of a subtle, let's talk to engineers approach than we did official studies, because we had the one thousand dollar study at one point that was presented to us. That seemed like overkill for a situation where we knew we had a pedestrian safety issue in the first place. So, you know, we're looking at panoply of things here to try to do in general throughout this community where we spot problems. I think Liz was trying to say we're cherry picking on Facebook. And honestly, no, we're trying to handle them as we can, because we have limited resources, obviously, but we're trying to handle them as we see major problems here. And that intersection honestly is a problem, especially in the winter time with that visibility issue that exists over there. So at least we're going to try to resolve that, get some better information on rest of Saratoga Avenue. Your complaints, concerns were heard loud and clear by Facebook and everything that we're discounting them. It's a conversation at the end of the day that we have there.
And, you know, there's the park and the pool, people walking, people walking, all of these. Some people don't have cars, so they have to walk. Yeah. There's rental crap down there. Older people are still living in some of those homes. You know, that's their option, just to walk there. So there's a lot of walking, you know, in that area and crossing. So.
Appreciate it. Great. Thank you for all your back and forth on this. I'm sure we do appreciate that. Anybody else? Gia. Last chance on Zoom also for anybody that wants to get comments.
Gina Marosi, Tenno Glory Lane. Ellie, you're sweet, and I appreciate the sentiment, but you deserved it. It took a village, and it took a village and beyond to put on Family Fun Day. And I would be remiss not to stand here and acknowledge the task force, who probably were ready to kill me by Sunday.
Can imagine.
The volunteers, the, the, our volunteers are just fabulous. I mean, I, I could go on, okay?
And Liz. Bill.
Oh, yeah, she was, she helped, but your husband was amazing. Sorry. Our sponsors, we were able to raise a record amount of money to put this event on. It's just so heartwarming. And everybody that came out, like you said, the threat of rain didn't keep them away. We got doused, but they stayed dry. The rain gods are with us, and thank you for that. Our next event is the September eleventh ceremony to be held on September eleventh at seven PM. It'll be a candlelight vigil again this year. We've got a very good guest speaker coming. And hopefully, you can all attend. We'll have more on that finalization at the next meeting. And just one last thing I have to say, and this is as a life of a firefighter, please don't treat your village department differently than any other department. These guys work hard. They volunteer hard. They train hard, and they show up, and they need the consideration that any other department gets. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Although, I will, I will say that Steve Brown and Krista Bu, if you're talking about getting doused, they got doused during the hours, and that kid washed. Unbelievable how so they were. Oh, my goodness.
And then there was American dump.
Well, that was whatever. And the guardsmen, that I wanted to bunk with as well. Thanks to them as well. Appreciate them.
It took a whole village and beyond.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, Martha.
Martha, Iguji three Encore Drive. I would just like to say that since the questions about qualifications of committee members who've never answered, it leads me to believe that three people on the board seemingly do not trust the other two duly elected trustees to make qualified, informed choices when it comes to committee members.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody else, it is time for other business, including but not limited to Board Response, public comment. Sorry, Ben?
Okay.
So your mic went out, that's why I went there. Sorry.
Yeah. So just one thing I didn't mention is I'm, I'm happy to see that the board majority has now come around to the utility of forms. I know that was a big problem initially when we introduced a committee form. You guys thought it was going to be a big bureaucratic hurdle. Now we got another form. So I'm glad that we're on board with the idea that people can fill out a short form to join a committee. So thanks for that flip. The other thing I'd like to do is just build on something Liz Cormo said, which is, when we get draft laws, it would be very helpful to have the source of those draft laws provided with the law, at least upon request, at least tracked, so that if someone asks, it can be retrieved. It would be very helpful to do that. A couple times, the reason for putting some language in was, well, they did it. And then the question was, well, who are they? I have no idea who they are. So that's not really adequate. And I think it's a reasonable expectation that if we're getting laws from somewhere else, or the language of law somewhere else, that it's tracked where those are from. So if we want to do more research and have a deeper understanding of why something's in, the wording, it is, we're able to do that. So I appreciate moving forward when there's new language that comes from elsewhere, that we just, you just keep track of where that's from in case we have additional questions. Thank you.
Ben? Not for nothing. Our attorney vets these things beforehand, because she knows to a certain degree what to recommend, what not to recommend, or tells us, hey, you're going to want to look at these things and make your changes accordingly to fit them to the Village of Boston Spa, because not everything fits correctly. So I just find it a little bothersome that you don't trust the attorney when you have full ability to make the changes to the law ultimately, which is what we did, it affects the fifteen feet and all that stuff back last time. So I don't think it's necessarily relevant where it came from as much as what do you want to do with it ultimately and make it fit into the Village of Boston Spa.
When, when we ask, why is this wording here? The answer that we are given by you is, well, they did it somewhere else. That's like the only reason it's in there. We have no other reason.
Sage, we can change it to fit our village.
So we don't know where the, sorry, go ahead.
I was just, well, I was just going to say, this happened with the parking code, where I think we had like fifteen feet around hydrants. What's that?
The ethics code.
Ethics code.
Yeah, we knew exactly where those, that language.
Because you gave it to me. And said, use this code.
We knew exactly what sources were, what the sources were.
So anyway, the department code had fire hydrant businesses that just didn't fit the village, and it still be deemed safe based on where, how we currently operate with our fire boxes around those. And so, you know, again, you sort of, and this is where our input comes in, look at what the text is, fit it around your village to make sure it's going to fit the village's scenario. I don't really care where it came from as much as what we're going to do with it to make it fit here. And then with her guidance, make sure that what we're proposing is still legal at the end of the day. That's the way it should work.
Yeah, and that, that's what we've done. But sometimes there's language that you, just doesn't make sense on the face of it. You can alter it, but you don't really know what you're doing if you don't have a reason for it being there in the first place. And I think it's a perfectly reasonable question to ask, you know, why is this here at all? Or why is it in the form it is? And if the answer is, well, they did it that way somewhere else, then the question, then it's reasonable to follow that up and say, okay, let's see how it's working there. Was, what, why is it in there? So the question of why, if it comes up, the answer to say, oh, they did it somewhere else, to me, isn't enough. Like, I want to know, how did it work? Why was it there? And so that's what I'm requesting is, is that, that ability to pursue that question if it comes up. And there's plenty of language, which you're right, we, we think is perfectly fine, and we don't have to follow. But now and then, on a regular basis, there will be something that just doesn't make a lot of sense. And to just say, well, they did it somewhere else to me, isn't adequate.
Anybody else?
Christine, I just wanted to ask a question. The library is doing all these cleaning efforts. Are there days that you could use volunteers from the community, or is it more specialized, kind of like, organization?
Well, we have. And the last night that we're going to, we put it out to the library board and also to friends in the library, you know, that, those, the whole, the whole group, the library staff, the last night, we're going to be doing it. We've been doing it for several weeks. The last night, we're going to be doing it this Thursday. Okay, from six to eight. Six to, six to eight, I guess, yeah. All right, thank you. I don't know how much is left to do, so it's been on a tear, but that's, I believe, the last.
Awesome. Thank you.
Here.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to answer whatever questions were being thrown around multiple times, I think the motion itself spoke for itself. Those that don't want to understand what the motion said or the implications of it are going to choose to keep it political in that respect, I guess. Everybody's going to have an opportunity here to provide analysis, thoughts on who goes in. We're going to be leaning on our consultant to determine the best makeup of a steering committee using stakeholders. And we clearly are going to need to have stakeholders that have direct contact with the downtown area. That's what this is about. That's what the map is. The map could be slightly expanded or painted. I think there's some opportunity maybe expand it if we can make it contiguous up to the infirmary, for instance. And that, that's the goal, I think, for some folks, to get that to happen. But the long story short is that, yeah, it, it can be a wide open definition from the state, but we have a consultant that is a professional at this and guiding in getting a good steering committee together that the state's not going to reject on one hand, and that's going to be beneficial to the process on the other hand. And so we are, none of us are professionals in that respect. And it's time to, as we always say, rely on the consultant. Well, relying on the consultant that we're paying, what, a hundred plus thousand dollars to for this, I think it is ultimately? That's what the grant's for, for the consultant. So they're going to earn their money here in guiding us as to what the correct calls are in something like this as much as any place. So that's, that's the answer to apparently the questions.
That, what, everything you said can be done with five people versus three people.
You're going to have input, Ben. I just don't know what you think. None of us are going to have.
We all know how this is going to work. We all know. And when we asked on May thirteenth if the committee policy would be followed, trustee Vandenta said, yes, it was going to be followed. And so I don't understand why there was this flip. Yeah, another flip. We can accomplish every goals we want to without, without changing the policy as well.
We look forward to your input when we get applications sent. Can I get a motion to that vouchers be audited and meeting adjourned at eight twenty-two PM? Trustee Vandenta, trustee first push discussion, all favor. opposed. Motion carried. See you at our next meeting with the location being announced.